Let's get it on going. Everybody got your game face on ready? Okay. Oh, you hear me? Whoa. Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the regular meeting of the Guyman City Council. And at this time, I'd like to call Dallas McLasson from the Connection Church to give our invocation.
By your heads with me. Father, thank you for tonight. Thank you for our time together as this council. Lord, we pray blessings upon them. Give them wisdom as they go forward to endure the matters of the city. We thank you for this time that we can gather to listen, but also to be informed. We give you the praise and may everything else fall to the wayside. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. If you'd join in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll call this meeting to order. Agenda item number two is attendance roll call and determination of a quorum.
Mr. Alvedras?
Present.
Mr. Idson?
Here.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. Hilton?
Here.
Ms. Sanchez?
Present.
Ms. Hoffman? Mr. Petty?
Here.
Mr. Shannon?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Agenda item number three is public comments. Do we have anybody registered for public comments? Are there any public comments? I'm going to take a little liberty before we get started. You know, last week and I'm... Last week was a tough week for a lot of people. And this week's been tough. I finally had time to stop and think. There's not many people in this room, but I remember exactly where I was when John F. Kennedy got assassinated and several others. And my basis tonight is what are we coming to that life is so easy to throw away because of disagreements? We need to learn how to sit down and talk, disagree, and come to an agreement. When we leave, we're not enemies. But we've got to the point that the world wants to... People want to call, talk bad about people, not talk about the issues facing us. So let's all get better. We need to get better. This fighting back and forth, it's time to learn how to reach across the aisle, stateswomanship or statesmanship, but mainly just sit down and talk, get your group... Get your ideas shared and come to a conclusion. But I hope that this is a start of our nation becoming united where we all work together again. So thank you for indulging me. Agenda item number four is approval of the consent agenda.
Make a motion we approve the consent agenda, item four.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Hilton?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Agenda item number five is discussion and possible action to authorize waiving the electrical permit and inspection fees associated with the construction of the new charity, Hedrick Hitch Elementary School, as requested by Guyman School. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Shannon and Mr. Petty for their comments.
Mayor, as you see, I've got a... In your packet, a kind of a letter explaining the possibilities and of this, that if we do excuse those, I would entertain any questions at this time for that. And first of all, I want to thank Melissa Watson. Thank you for... We have a great communication, I feel like, and I appreciate you communicating back to me when I needed what I needed. So I gave you some pros and cons to if the phase... The fees were waived. It's really up to the council at this time, but like everything else that the city does comes to the state statute, I run it by our city attorney. And Mr. Petty, do you want to just jump in here and...
Yeah. Yeah, I received the inquiry and the information provided in it. And unfortunately, Article 10, Section 14 of the Oklahoma Constitution prohibits doing that. And there's a specific reference in the Oklahoma Municipal League handbook to that section of the Constitution that prohibits it. Now, the information I was provided indicated that some... Evidently, some cities may be doing that. So I placed a call... I did research. I could not find a Attorney General opinion or court appellate opinion addressing the specific issue here with schools. So I placed a call to general counsel for the Oklahoma Municipal League to see if he could provide some information that might change my view of what the Constitution says and what the Oklahoma Municipal League handbook says. And I have not had a return call yet. That was yesterday when I placed the call, when I got the information. But until he provides some information that would persuade me otherwise, you just can't do it.
You are... Mr. Petty, would you say we table this and when you get a response back, maybe we can call a special meeting?
I'm having a little trouble hearing you, sir.
Maybe we table this and then we... When you get a response back, we can hold a special meeting?
Yeah. Yeah, if... Yeah, what I would intend to do, if I receive information that changes my mind, then if I do get that, well, I'll notify manager and council immediately. I don't... Factually, I don't expect that to happen, but we'll see. We've had to deal with this in... With that constitutional provision on other issues from time to time, and it's rigid. It's just very rigid. So until there's some authority, either by way of an Attorney General opinion or an appellate opinion, that it doesn't apply, then we've got to abide by it.
Could we do reduced fees?
Do what?
Could we do reduced fees? Reduce them?
I'm still not hearing you, Jason.
Could we do reduced fees is what he's asking?
Do what?
Reduced fees?
Well, if you reduce fees for everybody, yeah.
I motion that we table it until we know more information based on the Constitution.
Okay. I have a motion and a second by Mr. Hilton.
Idson?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Hilton?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have five ayes to table.
We can do that until further notice, until Mr. Petty finds out, right? And then we can get together again.
Agenda item number six, discussion and possible action to authorize advertising for bids for the national soccer complex, Phase Two for additional parking lots and sidewalks. Yes, ma'am.
So we finally were able to get that $650,000 that was granted to us by the land water conservation grant moved to Phase Two, so it didn't include an additional field. But during our research, we indicated that while a field would be nice, what we mostly need is more parking. We've seen a lot of parking up and down the highway, kind of even in the grassy area where where our proposed parking lot is now. So that's what we've moved to. We've hired Kim Lee Horn to go ahead and do our design, so we're asking to go out for bids so that we can get this construction started.
So the sidewalks... Can you pull up the image?
Yes, and the sidewalk, sorry, yeah.
Are some of the grass portions being addressed or no? Are we just still keeping the ozone grass?
Yeah, we're addressing those. As you mentioned, the council wanted us to look into that, so they'll be replaced.
It just doesn't make... To me, it doesn't make sense.
I agree.
In some of the areas where we have turf and then that grass so close to the turf.
Yes, so we've also spoke with Kim Lee Horn, and they're giving us some hard fast numbers so that we can have a better idea of what it will cost.
And we probably won't be able to knock it all out this go around, but in the future, I just think it was not engineered or planned out properly, in my opinion.
So what we're doing with the sidewalk is we're also connecting the whole thing. So you'll see it's going around the north, down to the east, and then all the way through the south side as well, so that the whole thing will loop around, so it'll be one continuous sidewalk.
And is that including... Can you scroll down a little bit a little bit? Or, sorry, go up. Right there, right there. So are... There's going to be a gate also on that east side as well, right?
Yes. So we're going to go ahead and where we're going to add the two additional pavilions with bleachers seating, we're adding a gate on each side of those for easy access, as well as a gate down here for maintenance. We're having an issue right now with getting in our trucks for lighting for them to go and fix, because all of our gates are eight foot, so we're adding this 16-foot gate, so it's easy access for any trucks, any bucket truck, sorry.
Okay.
Drawing looks good. It connects all sidewalks.
Nice little walking trail.
Yeah. Okay.
One more last question. How many parking spots will be available once we get that?
So for this, we're doing 178 additional parking spots, so it's all the stuff shaded in the gray, you know, X lines, I don't know how... And then that Y portion, we're leaving open for additional parking for later if we need it.
Any other questions?
I make a motion that we authorize advertising for bids for national soccer complex, Phase Two, additional parking lots, sidewalks, item six.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Hilton?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number seven is discussion and possible action to authorize advertising for bids for one new and unused dump truck for a street department.
Yes, we definitely... The street department, and that should just say for the city of Guyman personnel, really, because we all use the same equipment, but this will be paid out of the street department. Where I think the truck itself that we have right now is probably old enough to float, so it just... It's unsafe and it needs to be put on surplus and do away with it.
I make a motion we authorize advertising bids for one new and unused dump truck, street department, item seven.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Hilton?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number eight is discussion and possible action to accept golf cart plan... Path plan as presented by Gary Geist and recommended by the golf.
Mayor, this is something that probably should have been done a long time ago. When I come on board this time, we just kind of looked at different projects and I play a little golf, and I think everybody in this council plays a little golf, but we have one of the nicest facilities out there we've ever in the whole entire region. But what we're lacking is a cart pass. It had been started years ago. Also, while I'm digging through, you know, documents, there never was a set plan for a cart pass, a master plan. And what my... What I envision is having a master plan that everybody agreed upon, and believe it or not, up to now, everybody that's been through the golf board, I think the plans and everything, J.F. Kretmeron's been out there for probably about a month now, maybe two months, went through probably two or three tournaments and had a lot of good input. I've got... I've received more input, too, so we're going to add, you know, down the middle of hole five and six and loop by the hole 14 tee box. So we've had a lot of great input, but what we need is a master plan that we can stick to. And when I say when we stick to it is when it's approved by city council, that's what it's going to be. And as money comes in and we can get portions of this done, if it takes two years, three years, four, five years, but as money comes available, here's your final product.
This should also help with maintain... Maintenance, maintaining and keeping everything in order.
Oh, yeah, best... Mainly maintenance on landscaping and, most importantly, golf carts. I mean, it's pretty rough out there, and so once we get everything paved like that, repairs on golf carts will probably go down a lot, especially on the suspension. Plus, there's going to be grass growing where there needs to be grass growing. Right now, there's cut across trails and... Trails is what they are, so it'll look like a golf course.
Any other discussion questions?
I wish I could tell you this can be done in two, three, or four years, but we'll just see how the money comes in.
I make a motion that we accept golf cart plan, path plan as presented by... Is there going to be a presentation areas? Gary?
He's not here.
Gary Geist, then recommended by the golf board, item eight.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Idson?
Aye.
Hilton?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number nine is discussion and possible action to appoint a new member to fill the vacancy of Brent Brooks, whose term ends in 2027 on the airport board as recommended by the golf board.
Mayor, this is an advisory board only. It's made up of pilots that interact with the pilots, other pilots, transient pilots, and Mr. Brooks, I believe, moved away. And the airport board brought a name to the board, Eric Lamis. They are recommending Eric. He's also a pilot, so... To be appointed to the board to fill his vacancy.
Any discussion on Mr. Lamis or motion?
I make a motion that we appoint Mr. Lamis to the board, filling in Brent Brooks'. Term ends 2027, as recommended by the airport board, item nine.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Hilton?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number 10 is discussion and possible action to approve order of determination for dilapidated structure at Lot 11, Block 33 of the Funk Edition to the City of Guyman, Texas County, Oklahoma, also known as 909 Ellison. Yes, sir, Mr. Smith.
Yes, we presented this last month and tabled it then, but to recap, we started this dilapidated structure case in January 2nd of this year, went through our process, everything we needed to do statutory, including a notice of hearing June 20th of this year. We still recommend that we go forward with this order of determination for this dilapidated building. We will have to bid it, so that would put us starting the project, starting and completing between November 7th and November 21st. Like the topic earlier, it kind of comes down to the definition of a dilapidated building. I have that if you guys like that.
Thank you, Drew. I believe at this particular time, and as Mr. Smith had stated, that everything's been done. It had been approved by the city attorney, the boards acted, and it's also my recommendation to go ahead and approve this order of determination for this dilapidated structure at this time.
We've done everything the city can do on this, right?
Right, yeah.
Any discussion, motion?
Make a motion to approve order of determination for dilapidated structure, Lot 11, Block 33, Funk Edition, City of Guyman, Texas County, Oklahoma, AKA 909 North Ellison, item 10.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Idson?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Hilton?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number 11 is the monthly report from Main Street Guyman.
Good evening, mayor, councilman, Mr. Shannon. You did receive my director's report. I was on vacation, much needed, but I did want to let you know some things that we do have going on that would have been in the report you would have gotten. We had eight renewals in partnerships last month and three new partnerships, and we're working with a couple of new businesses. You'll see some new businesses popping up on Main Street and in our district, so we're excited about that. We also have sold nine benches this last month, and that is a $600 profit to Main Street Guyman selling those benches. Three of them will be in Guyman, the others will all be located in Gruber, Texas. So we're kind of happy about the sale of those benches and bringing in extra income. We... This Thursday, we will have our election of our Fiesta King and Queen. We hold those interviews at the public library. We have 10 students this year that applied to be Fiesta King and Queen, and so each of those will receive a scholarship to OPSU, and the King and Queen will get a bigger scholarship. So we're excited that we had a really good turnout. And as you know, we had postponed Fiesta this year just because of some things that were going on in the community, and so we started sharing stories about different inspiring people in our community, and we've had a really good positive feedback. As a matter of fact, I probably got 15 people's requests yesterday to share their stories. So we're really excited about sharing. When we had National Main Street here back in February, Mr. Shannon attended, in their direction for our program was place making and storytelling. And so we feel like sharing these stories is part of that direction that we are being led by National Main Street. And then on September 29th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Methodist Church, we're going to be having a dinner and a crowning of the Fiesta King and Queen. We would love for you to be our guest, you and a spouse. And it's just a private dinner for the families and then our sponsors and our committee, but the dancers will be there to entertain, and then we'll dinner... Do dinner and then crowning the Fiesta King and Queen and giving the scholarships at that time. Any other questions?
No? Think we're good, thank you.
Charles, did you want to say something? Sorry. I thought he was right behind me.
Good evening, council. I'm Charles Wy. I'm a board member. I'm a member of Main Street. I've been involved for the 20 years, and it's been a hearing Guyman, and I just want to say thank you for your support. Continued support of the city means a lot to this program, and as a business owner and a member, I'm excited in the direction that is headed. We have a great group of volunteers, and we're headed in a great direction with the new Main Street transformation strategies, and I just appreciate you guys. Any questions?
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 12 is monthly report for the Guyman Chamber of Commerce. You filling in for Eric tonight?
I hope not.
Oh, I didn't see.
Because I'm not prepared. Now, Eric, she emailed, she's got a previous...
Okay.
I haven't even seen her for a while, but she has a report, it's attached.
Okay. Thank you. With that, I did... Agenda item number 13 is to adjourn as the Guyman City Council, so we'll do that. And we'll reconvene as the Guyman Utilities Authority. So I'll call this meeting to order. We've done attendance roll call and determination quorum. Public comments. Agenda item number four is approve the minutes of the special meeting of the August 12th, 2025 meeting.
Make a motion we approve the minutes, special meeting, August 12th, 2025, item four.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Hilton?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
About five ayes.
Agenda item number five is discussion and possible action to approve the invoice from Hydro Resources. Hydro Resources Midcontinent in the amount of $54,127.05 for the water well number 21 repair. And thank goodness they got it done. So do I have a motion to pay this bill? Are any questions?
Need to. Make a motion that we approve invoice from Hydro Resources Midcontinent in the amount of $54,127.05 for water well number 21 repair, item five.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Hilton?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number six reports from committees, council members, and city manager. Do you want to go first?
Yeah, I'll, I'll jump out. Number one, I've got about six items I'd like to discuss and advise the council and the, and the citizens of Guyman. The first thing is today or yesterday, we discovered a sinkhole upon Price Boulevard and Circle Drive. It's, it's one of our main outflow lines that has history. We had an old wastewater treatment plant there just south of where this is at and this is an old concrete line, probably been in there probably since probably the 30s and 40s and that has deteriorated. So it's, right now it looks like maybe about 150 to 200 feet it could be. That's what we're, we're hoping it is. We might have to go from manhole to manhole, we'll be right at 30, 300 feet. So we're probably looking at, probably in excess 150 to $250,000 worth of expenditures right now. We got the, the road completely closed off. We're asking the citizens just avoid that, stay away from there because that sinkhole's a pretty good size today, so.
Shut down the hole.
Yeah, that, was that by your house? Be careful walking out your front door. But with pretty welcome, it's, it's pretty well confined to the middle of the street and so we'll see. We've got a contractor supposed to be here in the next day or two, I believe, to go ahead and start, see if we can find some good pipe to repair, so. It's still kind of up in the air. I'm gonna skip around on my list. I, I got some good news today from Chad for Chad had to take off. Chad's been in contact with Union Pacific Railroad, the old elevator sits on Fourth Street, finally found out, he finally, he stuck to his guns, finally found out that is leased to Atterbury Grain Company. And after we found the right person, after Union Pacific went ahead and told us who they leased it to, they're coming out sometime this next week to evaluate the property and clean it up, so great news. Hopefully get that thing taken care of. Last meeting, you know, it was brought up by the city council that staff starts looking towards the future of Guyman via our water conservation measures. We've got, we've struck up a real good relationship, we've already had a good relationship with Oklahoma State University and sharing ideas and thoughts about how, what to plant, what not to plant, how to water it. So be looking forward to some very educational measures being taken here real soon on our, for our water conservation efforts. The buzz around town now is food trucks inspections. State legislature passed a bill that all food trucks will have to be inspected by the state far marshal, also by the, the state, I call it the propane association, but liquid petroleum and the health department. And the city will, will not do any of the inspections. Well, the, the bad thing about it, and if you're listening to K K B S this morning, kind of got on a little soapbox, they were mandating to the closest inspection station that, we have 18 food trucks licensed here in Guyman, they would have to travel to Woodward to get inspected. That's, I just totally unacceptable and, and to me it was. We've got to know Mr. Keith Bryant, he's the state far marshal. Believe it or not, Mr. Bryant, that, oh my gosh, there's no way that could happen. So he is working towards of, when they're coming out to Woodward to do their inspections, I think it's the last part of September, he's coming out and spend a full day here in Guyman to perform inspections on those food trucks that are here at Guyman. So that, that was a win for that, so that was a good thing, so. More to come on that. We're shooting for October the 2nd. The new rule is taking effect November 1st, so hopefully we get the state far marshal and the others to come out and perform the inspections here in Guyman locally. I've asked the golf course, we're, we're going to be doing a, a full blown maintenance on the water well out there. Jeff and I, we just talked and, and Matthew would have been part of the conversations, but they just had a baby girl yesterday, I think it was yesterday, everybody's fine. But we're, we're going to pick a, a couple of weeks when we're going to do a, a maintenance on that water well. I've, I've had disposition coming on three years, that well's, and I don't, I don't think we've, last time we probably pulled it and done any work on it, it's been over five, six, seven years. So it's time to pull that thing, look at, see what she's looking like underneath and completely rebuild it, so. That'll happen sometime, probably October, November, December. We're still kind of contemplating because apparently there's, there's a time in the winter that we just don't, we just don't water, so that will be the time we'll contact Hydro Resources to do a maintenance on, on that water well out there. The last thing I want to talk about is, believe it or not, 2026 budget is, we start our budget with department heads, community leaders and others in the first week of October. I can't believe it's already time to go into 2026 budget year, so. With that being said, we had a great year so far, we're still like a couple, three months into it, but sales tax is up a little bit. I sent out your revenue and expenditures here. I think we're doing a fantastic job, department heads are following their, their budgets. We have water, we have revenue coming in and expenditures going out, but we're, we're staying ahead, we're staying ahead of the game. It was kind of comforting to see that, it's not comforting to see a sewer line emergency project like that hit us for a quarter of a million, but we got money to take care of it. That, that's a good thing, so. And with that being said, I want to turn the floor over to Jason Turk with Clearwater, he's the, the gas, I call it the gas guy, the natural gas guy, I think he's got some updates for his coming winter. Jason, welcome back.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you all for having me here. We got to talking, I don't know, a little over two years ago about a couple of things identified that your supplier, Constellation, had really just kind of abandoned the city and as far as any communication, everything that's really necessary. So we were able to put together some ideas. We're an Oklahoma city-based company headquartered here. We, we serve a lot of cities. We also serve large industrials and different things like that too, utilities, but there was a real opportunity here to help you all out and so far it looks like everything's really going well. Looks like we're going to come in probably just short of a million dollars from '24 to '25 this year. So I think we're going to end up in the 900,000s probably, but not quite a million, but just a unbelievably fantastic improvement.
We're not done yet, so give us a couple of months.
That's right. Yeah, that's exactly right. There's still some variables out there, but things are projected as possible and things look good. On top of that, we've really been able to just improve the overall communication with staff here at City of Guyman, working on different administrative issues that, that we're able to help out with, so on and so forth. It's just been a really great situation. And I do want to say, just, you know, complimentary, you know, I go and, and visit with a lot of cities, a lot of boards, go to a lot of these type of meetings and the things that you all have going here in the City of Guyman are, is really exciting and impressive from, you know, from, from our standpoint, on a professional level, you all do business as professional and organized as anybody we work with. So we are really thankful that you're giving us the opportunity to partner with you and so thank you for that. Lastly, you know, one of the things we said as we were having these discussions is this isn't the kind of situation where we're just going to come in, sign a contract and say, see you in five years or something like that. I mean, we're, we're here every day, we're on the phone with you all, working through different problems, obviously here at board meetings, touching base with you and that's also been a really, really good situation. So thank you for that.
Jason, you might kind of brief to the council, we've already looking into '26 and the gas price, that's coming down too, so.
Yeah.
Might touch on that.
Yeah, I think, you know, '26, '27, especially '26, there's some real risk exposures as far as all these data centers coming online. There's enormous energy needs across the country that a lot of natural gas is going to go to for the power, electricity needs. And then also the LNG, liquid natural gas exports that are going overseas are at such a higher premium, can be sold for a lot more than they can be here in the United States currently and it's been that way for quite some times. They continue to build ports and terminals that are just making this more of a, becoming a fundamental issue for natural gas supply and pricing and all that thing. So we're, we're just going to continue to try to put, put best foot forward, put us in the best position that we can be and stay on top of the market the best we can and, you know, we're, we like to think we're pretty good at it and working with you all is, you know, like I said, it's, it's seamless really, you know, it's something that, that we appreciate. It's a, you're a good business partner, you know, we, we're thankful for that. We don't have, not everybody is and you all are and we appreciate that.
But I can say that the gas prices, the, the price of the gas itself is going to be cheaper than what we've been given, so, and that's a positive. A lot of people don't understand at this point in time, it's the cost of delivery that the City of Guyman has to. That will never come down. I wished it could. I mean, we still, I mean, you, we've got employees, you, you just, and, and I will say Tracy's not here tonight, but we just went through one of our audits through the corporate commission and they came and drive the entire town and we come out smelling, well smelling like a rose. There's no gas leaks, no significant leaks or anything like that. That's something we have to do. They'll be back in probably two weeks to come do the industrial, the commercial part. So our gas loss here in town is very minimal, very minimal. So kudos to the guests, our guests and I'm going to call them gas, some of our guys. They're doing, they're doing a magnificent job of repairing and keeping everything up in first class, so. I'm looking forward to a good winter.
Yeah.
Yeah, cheaper winter, so.
Mike, so just for clarification, you mentioned 900,000, 900,000 or somewhere in that mark, now that, that's, that is the savings to our customers, right?
True, yeah.
We pass along the cost of gas, so it, it's a diminished price, so that's actually going back into our ratepayers?
It's going back into general, or not the general fund, County Utilities Authority and the gas department. And I'm serious, I'm, I'm looking forward to it and when I look forward to it, I mean, there're going to be some complaints, but if it's a big bad winter, we're going to be okay.
We're locked in for how many years? I mean, is this, do you do renegotiate every year?
No, you're, you're in a, you're in a longer term contract, but we look at the opportunities, you know, as the market provides opportunities as we go along and.
That's why I was wondering, as you said, there's going to be cheaper by unit, right?
Well, I was actually just looking at the actual facts of '24 to '25, you know, because we obviously have a lot of unknowns in '26 at this point. But there's hard data, you know, through, through, I guess, August right now and what's transpired and it's, we can look at what's expected, you know, weather wise and historically, looking at historical averages, so on and so forth and kind of what your positions are and if things, obviously there's already been a great deal of savings, it's in books, but it looks like there's going to continue to be more going forward.
Good.
Good question.
Anybody have anything else?
I will tell you, we handed out the audit, we just completed the audit. You have that book, it's also, will be available online. It should be uploaded after tonight or if you want, if you're like me, kind of like I have a hard copy, if you want a hard copy, we'll run your copy off if, if the public would like it, so. It's a good audit.
What else?
That's all I got.
That's it? Okay. You don't have any?
I just, thanks to the, the staff and department heads that come to every meeting and, and for your input and Shannon runs a pretty, pretty good shift here and we appreciate everybody and, and staff and all the department heads. Thank you very much.
Good? Julie?
So a lot of people don't know, but every year we get the opportunity to go down to downstate, go to O M L and Mr. Peterson was awarded an award. And, you know, a lot of people don't really realize how much the time and effort it takes for a council member to do a huge impact like Mr. Peterson has done and he's definitely earned that award. And hopefully in the future, when Mr. Peterson tends, wants to retire, we get our step up ourselves, somebody that can just go downstate and communicate for the city of Guyman. Because in all reality, if we're not in the room, we're not being heard. So Mr. Peterson has done that for us, for the whole city, time and time again and I personally appreciate all the efforts that he's done and he's, he's earned all the awards that they want to give him downstate.
Well.
So congratulations, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you for that. Well, it's, it's something I enjoy, something that we need, but I don't, you know, somebody nominate me, I don't know who, so whatever. But you know, as I said at, at Oklahoma City, I didn't win the awards myself, I won it off the backs of the city employees and all the people that do the heavy lifting in City of Guyman. When you, when you live in a great community and, and serve a great community, it's all a, it's all for a good purpose and plaques are plaques, but getting to take care of your hometowns, getting to take care of your hometown and I appreciate that. And I, it was a, kind of floored me that I got the deal and, and I appreciate you all remembering me. All right, any other committee reports? I guess that's it and we'll adjourn to this and then we go, we got one more that we, is this it? This is it, we're done? All right, you guys, Julie, tell me what I was supposed to say. All right, we stand adjourned. Thanks everybody for coming.
Thank you all.